Good evening. It's 6 o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order, please. Council members, we'll start with an invocation led by Councilmember Parker, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Councilmember McKenzie. Please rise as you're able.
Tonight, as we gather to do the business of the people of Knoxville, we are reminded of the many faiths and religions and belief systems that are held by those who call the city of Knoxville home. While we may pull from different teachings and understandings to form our moral compass, we are called upon as elected officials to uphold the rule of law, a principle of governance in which all persons, institutions, and entities, public and private, including the government itself, are accountable to the laws that are publicly promulgated, equally enforced, and independently adjudicated, and which are consistent with international human rights norms and standards. Each one of us here today swore an oath of office to support, defend, and abide by the Constitution of the United States of America, which includes an obligation to uphold international law and obligations. When we are silent, we are complicit. When we do not act, we are complicit. May our decisions tonight be guided by this ultimate duty.
Face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, Mr. Johnson, would you please call roll?
Councilwoman Fugots.
Here.
Councilwoman Helsley.
Here.
Councilwoman McKenzie.
Here.
Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Parker. Councilwoman Ryder.
Here.
Councilman Roberto.
Here.
Councilwoman Singh.
Vice Mayor Smith.
Here.
And Councilman Thomas. All members present, mayor.
Okay, is there a motion on the minutes from our last meeting?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item for our agenda tonight, are there any items to be withdrawn? Are there any items to be postponed? Councilmember Roberto.
Thank you, mayor. Both parties want to postpone item 10A to our next meeting in two weeks.
Okay, motion made to postpone for two weeks. Item 10A has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion to postpone item 10A carries. Are there any other items to be postponed? Are there any items requested to be added by motion? Is there a motion on the consent agenda?
Motion approved.
Okay, Councilmember Singh.
Mayor, I would like to move to take 9A to 9M and put it on the consent agenda. It's something that was, everything was voted unanimously two weeks ago.
Okay. Motion has been made to add all the items under 9A, ordinances on second reading, item 9A through M, to the consent agenda has been made and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we'll go back to a motion on the entire consent agenda, including the ones that were just added. Is there a motion on that consolidated consent agenda?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, now it's time for my mayor's report. I want to start by thanking everyone who was able to come out last week to celebrate Knoxville's largest federal grant to the city and KCDC in recent history. $42.6 million Reconnecting Communities Grant. This will help us continue our work of reconnecting neighborhoods that were cut off due to urban renewal. We will use these dollars to help increase access to generational wealth-building opportunities and to add more quality-of-life amenities. As many of you know, this was our second time applying for this grant, and thanks to the foundational work already being done in our city by so many critical partners, including Councilwoman Gwen McKenzie and the African-American Equity Restoration Task Force, this time we were successful. So Councilwoman McKenzie, thank you for forging ahead with the formation of that task force and for all you do to lift up the people of our city. I also want to recognize some other partners who helped throughout this application process, the Beck Cultural Exchange Center, the Knoxville Urban League, BikeWalk Knoxville, the State of Tennessee, Legacy Parks, and many more. It was definitely a team effort, and we look forward to rolling out specific plans for these dollars in the months ahead. Later this week, we ask all of you to join us as we celebrate our new Urban Forest Master Plan. Trees Knoxville, the City of Knoxville, the City's Tree Board, Keep Knoxville Beautiful, KUB, and other partners will mark the completion of the Knoxville Urban Forest Master Plan and outline plans moving forward. One of our goals is to increase the city's tree canopy to 40% by 2040. To learn more, join us for the kickoff event this Thursday, 9:00 a.m. at Walter Hardy Park. The next day, at 2:00, we invite you all to join us as we break ground on improvements at Augusta Quarry. This year, we are investing $3.6 million to add restrooms, an expanded overlook, an improved pedestrian path, floating swim platforms, and more. This project will last into the fall. So during the closure, we encourage Knoxvilleians to take advantage of the many other boat launches and swimming areas nearby, like the ones at Sutri Landing Park, Holston River Park, Sequoia Hills Park, Meads Quarry, and more. And of course, we also have the city's fountains and swimming pools to cool off during the summer months. And a quick reminder about our rules of decorum. Those who wish to speak either to a specific agenda item or during public forum should have already signed up with Mr. Johnson, the city recorder, ahead of time. Council rules state that up to three people each may speak for or against an agenda item. Right now, item 11A has more than the allowed number of speakers. So I have, let's see. I have more than three speakers signed up to speak in favor of item 11A. Is this all of them? How many total is it?
That's in favor, these are opposed.
Okay. So there's six people signed up to speak against it and 10 in opposition. Are these the ones that came first?
Yeah, these are.
Okay. So unless otherwise indicated, I will just be calling on the first three who signed up. So if you had someone other than those first three, please confer and huddle in the back and find your three speakers before we get to item 11A. For all speakers, please do not use profanity. And when speaking to specific agenda items, please remember to stay on topic. Those who fail to adhere to those rules may be ruled out of order and asked to step away from the podium. For those who are listening, please note, you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. I'm going to repeat that. For those who are listening, please note, you may not disrupt a public meeting from the audience. Those who do may be asked to leave. Thank you in advance for everyone's respect for these rules. And that concludes my mayor's report. Are there any reports from council members? Okay. Then we will move on to item, elections and confirmations.
8A is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Jane Roberts to the Civil Service Merit Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. I believe Ms. Roberts is here. I just, oh, thank you, Ms. Roberts, for volunteering your time. It's a very important board to our city, and we appreciate your willingness to serve a full term again. Thank you so much. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
8B is a resolution confirming the reappointment of Heidi Burke Varcas and Tyrone Beach and the appointment of Andre Canty to the Police Advisory and Review Committee.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Again, council members, these are residents of our city who volunteer their time to do important work for our city, and we are very thankful. I believe that two of the candidates here for your confirmation are here tonight, Tyrone Beach and Andre Canty. If you're here, raise your hand. If you're not here, well, thank you for being here and thank you for volunteering your time. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next item?
8C is a resolution confirming the appointment of Chris Ford to the Design Review Board.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
11A is a resolution respectfully requesting that the federal legislators representing the city of Knoxville and the Biden administration uphold international law and the January 26, 2024 order of the International Court of Justice.
Okay, council members, as I alluded to a few minutes ago, we have several people signed up to speak in favor and several against. So we'll start with three people speaking in favor of item 11A. First person is Zainab Ansari. You have up to five minutes.
Our speakers have been locked outside along with over 100 other Palestinians, Muslims, and black people. We watched them let five people with Israeli flags in.
Thank you. If Zainab Ansari wants to...
Our speakers are locked outside.
Is Zainab Ansari in this room?
We have three speakers. Our speakers are locked outside.
All three of them? I think I saw Abdullah Hussein.
This has been documented with...
And Kent Minault. Okay, well, those people who signed up, you know, if we could let them come and speak. Zainab Ansari, Abdullah Hussein, and Kent Minault.
This will be documented. Over 100 black people, Palestinians, and Muslims told they can...
Excuse me, the people who signed up to speak can speak. Okay.
They let in at least four people. If no one wants to be talked about, we are a little frustrated that there's a whole room up here and not being talked about.
Yeah, we understand. Council members, just for your knowledge, as you all know, we have a big crowd here tonight. And upon the advice of Public Building Authority and the Fire Marshal, for safety reasons, we are not opening the balcony because we were worried about people's safety, that they would push off and, you know, it wouldn't be safe. So just wanted to let you all know. But we do want to let the people who signed up to speak, speak. So Abdullah Hussein. This is item 11A, 10A. All the other items have already been approved on consent. So if someone, I'll let you go first, and then Zainab Ansari and Kent Minault. Or Minault. Okay. Abdullah, if you could start by saying your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Abdullah.
Oh.
Knoxville. I begin first by addressing my family and loved ones in Palestine who are watching this on the live stream, my beloved grandparents, uncles and aunts and cousins. I'm so sorry that we've let you down in this way. I'm sorry that the stories you grew up with about America being a bastion of justice and peace globally have turned out to be untrue. I'm sorry that my government holds the hands of settlers as they stomp on your necks and imprison you and murder you. Please forgive us and know that we're doing everything within our power to stop this injustice. Most of you all know me. I'm no stranger to you all. I was born and raised here in Knoxville. I went to, I graduated as valedictorian from a local Knox County school. I served on the school board as a student rep with Mayor Kincaid and others. I graduated cum laude from the University of Tennessee here in Knoxville. My education has taught me to uphold values of liberty and justice and peace. My education has taught me not only about awful wars that have happened throughout history, but the things that we can learn from them. That if a group of people in another country can be convicted, can be convinced that mass murdering civilians is the only solution, then so too can we. And we must do everything in our power to stop that from happening again, to keep from falling into that trap. I would love to focus on local issues, I really would. But unfortunately, this has turned into a Knoxville issue. This is the state that produced the unconstitutional anti-Sharia bill, that produced Robert Doggart, who was convicted, a congressional candidate who planned to carry out an armed attack on a messiah in Muslim community in New York. This is the state where Representative Ogles, when asked about the massive civilian death toll, said, "I think we should kill them all." Where Congressman Fleishman, Fleishman, when he realized he was being asked a question by a Palestinian, said, "I will never support you. I will tell you to your face goodbye to Palestine." And this is the city where our mayor took a trip to Israel, toured illegal settlements, met with occupation forces in an effort to build political and social ties between the city of Knoxville and the state of Israel. A mayor who on multiple occasions has said that Knoxville stands with Israel. This is an issue that concerns...
Let the, please let the speaker speak.
So forgive us for concerning ourselves with an issue happening around the world and forgive us for needing some assurances from all of you that you actually care about our lives and that you value the rights of Palestinians and Muslims and civilians in any conflict. The U.N. just released a statement that 1.1 million men, women, and children in Gaza are in immediate danger of dying from starvation. These civilians are forced to eat grain that was meant for livestock. In less than six months, 90 journalists have been killed. 340 healthcare workers have been killed in Gaza. This level of civilian casualties and forced starvation and collective punishment is unprecedented in this century. I'm going to ask you a question. Do you know what is the average age of the 35,000 people killed in Gaza in the last six months? Do you know the average age? Let's take a guess. Was it 25? Maybe 18? Let's take a wild guess, maybe 15 years old. The average age of the 35,000 people killed by the Israeli military in the last six months is five years old. Five years old. I'm going to be clear with you all, and let's make, let's make this clear. This resolution does not call for supporting Hamas. It's not calling you to make any statement on Hamas or anything like that. It's asking you to please show us that you uphold the value of civilian lives, that you care about the fact that our government is complicit, and not only complicit, but supporting the murder of so many people, hospitals and schools and homes that have been razed to the ground. This is not the America that I learned about growing up, the America that I would love to be proud of and to tell my family that I'm so proud of. And the last thing I'll share is this. To the Knoxville Jewish Alliance, I'm extending an invitation to you all to meet and cordially discuss this issue with you all. You don't need to spend thousands of dollars flying some random Palestinian dude who has really iffy and wishy-washy weird views to come speak in Knoxville and educate us about issues that we witnessed with our own eyes. Let's talk. Whoever the leaders are, my name is Abdullah Hussein. I live here in Knoxville, and I'm happy to meet with any of you cordially and have a conversation. Thank you all so much, and I hope that we will see a day when Palestine is freed.
The next, the next person is Zainab Ansari.
I'm Ricky Draper.
Okay, you want to be the second of three?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Ricky, please start by saying your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Hi, my name is Ricky Draper. I'm a resident of Knoxville, 37917. I'm here as a representative of the Knoxville Chapter of Jewish Voice for Peace, an organization representing Jews across the country who are opposed to genocide and apartheid. I'm in coalition with the many people here tonight calling for peace, justice, and sanctity of all life. Jewish liberation and Palestinian liberation are intertwined. I am the descendant of people who have survived genocide, displacement, ethnic cleansing, and persecution because of who they are. I know the price of silence, and I refuse to be silent. Never again means never again for anyone. Never again includes Palestinians. Never again is right now. Councilmember Smith, you and others have said that this resolution is sowing division in our community. I need you to know that I've never felt more united than I do now. With the Muslim community of Knoxville, with Christian congregations standing for justice, with my Jewish community demanding that we stop the violence in Gaza, I've never felt more moral clarity or unity with my Knoxville neighbors than I do in this moment. Let's talk about what is actually sowing division. What is sowing division is the rhetoric of our leadership locally, nationally, and internationally that links anti-Zionism to antisemitism, which casts suspicion on our Muslim and Palestinian friends and neighbors who just want to see their families safe. This rhetoric mistakenly terms our desire for an end to genocide as hate speech. It has led to Jews like us in Knoxville being labeled as antisemitic, as not real Jews, quoted, for speaking out. I'm here to tell you that we are Jewish, we are real, and we are asking you to pass this resolution alongside many hundreds in our city and thousands across the country who have passed similar resolutions. It's true, there is division in this Jewish community. The Knoxville Jewish Alliance is a political body and represents a part of the Jewish Knoxville community. We represent another, and it is only growing. We urge you to understand that the Jewish community in Knoxville is not a monolith, and many of us feel that actions taken by Israel are bad for the Jewish community, here and everywhere. They link our identity and heritage, our safety, to genocide. As long as there have been Zionist Jews, there have been Jews like us who oppose violence and apartheid in all forms. What is actually sowing division in our community is mass starvation and bombing of refugee camps. What is sowing division is the everyday violations of international law in Gaza by the Israeli state, the invasion of hospitals, the targeting of journalists, the killing of children. What is sowing, what is sowing division is the seeming indifference or support for the atrocities of our leaders. The only way to heal the divisions in this community is to stop the violence and denounce genocide. During the temporary ceasefire, over 100 hostages were released. More hostages have been killed by the Israeli military than have been rescued. I'd like a minute back on the clock, please. A minute back on the clock, please.
No, please go ahead, it's fine.
That's not okay, but Knoxville City Council, this is your opportunity to be on the right side of history by passing this resolution. Generations, I promise you, will look back on this moment and ask, what did you do while Gazan children starved? What did you do while the Israeli army bombed refugee camps? The path towards unity, the path towards safety, is freedom, is equality, is the end of violence. The path towards a more united Knoxville is through preventing further genocide by passing this resolution. I stand with you, with my Palestinian neighbors and beloved community, along with many other Jews and allies, calling for a ceasefire. Pass this resolution, do the right thing.
Thank you very much. Okay, next person is Kent Minault. Kent Minault.
Hello, members of the city council. My name is Arlene Amorante, and I live in Sequoia Hills, which falls under District 2. I am an attorney, an educator, the daughter of Mexican immigrants, and I am here to grieve and to explain why I still have hope in the face of this relentless tragedy. The last time I was in these chambers, I came to support a ceasefire resolution, and I am frankly still trying to piece together what went wrong. How could it be possible that the city's elected representatives heard what I heard and then did nothing? I read the language of the resolution and could not locate the source of the controversy. But then it dawned on me that we do not view the world in the same way. Where I saw pain and grief, you saw tactics and maneuverings. Where I heard pleas for recognition, you heard noise. You behaved as though Muslims and Jews dishate each other, and that's a fact of life and that it would be best if you did not engage. But inaction is a choice. I recognize that your initial instinct has been, and probably will still be, to reject any formal discussion about these atrocities. But because we co-create our narratives as a society, it is imperative that you do not remain silent as you did on November 28th on the question of whether Israel should do more to protect innocent lives. The answer to this question should not be difficult, and your silence, again, was an answer. To remain silent as an American is to tacitly condone what we are all witnessing in Gaza, the deliberate starvation corralling of human beings into increasingly small swaths of land, facilitating their mass extermination with the weapons that our country has provided. When we had the first city council meeting on the 28th, the general consensus was that Israel would not continue its bombardment until the end of the year. And I suppose that we all gave ourselves the hope, the freedom to imagine that it would be over soon, but that did not happen. And since then, Israel has wantonly murdered everything in its path without distinction or remorse. Medics, time.
Let the speaker speak.
These are facts. You can look them up. I have a website if you would like to catalog it. It's at www.adelantemos.org.
Let the speaker speak, please.
And these sources, by the way, are from the U.N., which I hope you trust. Well, at this time, I would like to remind us that medics, journalists, children, Israeli hostages, mothers, and fathers have been tormented, as we all watch. Yesterday, The Wall Street Journal published an article warning that over 1 million Gazans are estimated to be starving. On top of that, Israel is threatening a full-scale grounded invasion of Rafah to slaughter or forcibly remove 1.9 million Palestinians sheltering there directly against the ICJ's orders, which, as you know, because I'm sure you read through the pages that are submitted in the document, the agenda today. I mourn for the invisibility and the dehumanization of my Palestinian brothers and sisters. I mourn for what we could be and cannot be until we are allowed to mourn and grieve together. In the face of such devastation, I ask you, members of the city council, to mourn with a community in pain. We may not be able to stop the war in Gaza, but at least you here in this room can tell your neighbors that they matter, that their pain matters. And this resolution means nothing more.
Okay. Now we're moving to the three speakers signed up to speak against item 11A. First person is Scott Jacobson. Scott Jacobson, are you present? Okay, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Scott Jacobson, 37902. What is happening in Gaza right now is horrific and a tragedy. But every ounce of blood that is being spilled is on Hamas. Hamas initiated this conflict. There was a ceasefire all the way up to October 6. On October 7, they stormed into Israel, killing over 1,200 people and taking over 200 hostages back into Gaza. Hamas then planted themselves in terror tunnels they spent billions of dollars building that they robbed from their own civilian population. Hamas is unequivocally recognized as a terrorist organization by the United States, Canada, the European Union, Australia, Japan, the UK, New Zealand, and numerous other nations and international bodies. Their charter outright rejects any possibility of negotiated peace settlements, advocates for the destruction of Israel, calls for jihad, and fosters antisemitic incitement. Numerous interviews with Hamas leaders have reaffirmed their intent to... to perpetrate the atrocities of October 7th again and again. U.S. intelligence agencies, along with those of France, Italy, NATO, and the UN, confirm Hamas's use of human shields to exploit Israel's efforts to minimize civilian casualties and capitalize on Western sensitivities towards noncombatant deaths. They've even shamelessly filmed their horrid acts of violence, including the murder of babies, rape, and mutilation. We are living in a time where the devil does not even hide.
Just wait just a minute while we try to close the door. Okay, go ahead.
We are living in a time where the devil does not even hide, and the world still cannot see him. For the people demanding an immediate ceasefire in Gaza because too many civilians have died, I ask you this: If too many civilians have died, how many civilian deaths would have been an acceptable number? The reality is that no civilian deaths are ever acceptable. But the reality is also that pacifism leads to the deaths of civilians as aggressors realize they can murder with impunity. Likewise, if the use of human shields ends military operations completely, the outcome will be an increase of aggression using human shields and therefore more civilian deaths on the other side. In other words, pacifism is as bloody as war. Hamas has put Israel in a no-win situation. There is no way out in which more innocent civilians do not die. The Jewish state can only choose to limit those through careful attacks with warnings and other precautions or simply sit back and wait for the deaths of its own citizens when attacked by an enemy that shows no mercy. Conal John Spencer, Chair of Urban Warfare Studies at West Point, said...
Yeah, just pause. We'll just pause the clock until the door is closed. Can you close the door, please? Okay, I think it's quiet enough, we can hear you.
Okay. Conal John Spencer, Chair of Urban Warfare Studies at West Point, said, "Israel has taken more steps to avoid harming civilians than any other military in history. You cannot say you support Israel's right to exist and defend itself and then oppose Israel when it exercises that right." Hamas has governed Gaza since 2007 and has received more than $7 billion of aid from the United States, according to government documents. Where did the money go? Well, approximately 10% of the budget goes to the martyr fund. This fund pays the monthly income to every Palestinian and their family who commits a terrorist act. The more Jews they kill, the more Hamas pays. If Palestinians can stay alive by simply not killing Israelis, then they are probably not facing a genocide. If the Israelis have the ability to stay alive only because of their tremendous defense systems, they're the ones facing a genocide. Stop asking Israel to agree to a ceasefire Hamas will not honor. Thank you.
The next... Please, we're ready for the next speaker. Thank you. The next person speaking against item 11A is Larry Markle. Mr. Markle, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
I'm Larry Markle, I'm a member of Temple Beth Elie, live in West Knoxville. The speakers in favor of the resolution eloquently expressed their pain, their sorrow, their horror, their grief, and I do not mean to invalidate that. The situation in Israel in Gaza is ghastly, but this resolution will not help the Palestinians in Gaza. Hamas's strategy was to commit atrocities that would provoke a massive response from Israel in order to mobilize world opinion. That is why their October 7 terrorist attack was characterized by such gratuitous cruelty, brutality, rape, mutilation, and murder of innocents. They launched their missile attacks from hospitals in order to make them targets for the IDF. Hamas has shown that they don't truly care about the Palestinian people. Palestinian civilians are simply shields made into targets so the Israeli counterattacks would inflict maximum casualties and generate pushback from uninvolved nations. And Israel's response? Israel's given Hamas just what Hamas had anticipated: the widespread bombing, the horrible suffering of the entire civilian population, the starvation, the fear, the despair that has resulted. Any person with an ounce of humanity wants this to stop. But what can the City Council of Knoxville, Tennessee, do? The proposed resolution is totally one-sided. It calls for Israel to stop all military action, but makes no demands on the terrorists who initiated it. It employs the incendiary term of genocide, but doesn't acknowledge the stated aim of Hamas to wipe the Israeli people and their nation from the face of the earth. It calls for an Israeli ceasefire, but doesn't ask the Hamas terrorists to stop launching rockets or to release their helpless hostages. The resolution proposes that Knoxville City Council ask the federal government to leverage its diplomatic relationships to prevent further violence and civilian deaths to safeguard Israeli and Palestinian lives. But our government is already trying to do this, imperfectly yes, but there is no easy solution. Diplomacy is not simple, and it requires both parties negotiating in good faith and willing to acknowledge each other's point of view. We know what doesn't work. Unrestrained expansion of Israeli settlements doesn't work. Overuse of administrative detentions and crowding the Palestinians into enclaves doesn't work. Also, constantly firing missiles at Israeli cities doesn't work. Terror attacks to rape and butcher Israelis doesn't work. Kidnapping innocents as hostages doesn't work. And we are seeing that pervasive bombing that destroys everything and in effect creates a famine is not an effective response to terror either. It hasn't eradicated the monsters, and it is breeding future terrorists. Policy is not fashioned with slogans and soundbites. Diplomatic solutions are fragile and perfect things and must be carefully crafted with empathy and compassion. I ask the city council to contribute by taking the shouting down a notch, implore both sides, both sides, to really listen to each other. Announce that you are looking for negotiations with compassion and understanding, not more articulate and more strident voicing of grievances. Encourage bilateral, but also unilateral, acts of de-escalation from both sides. I ask you to do this as individuals by letting the federal government know you support their efforts to reduce the conflict, the acrimony, the fear, and horror. Let family and friends in the Middle East know that you support their working on ways to live together, not developing a better strategy to obliterate the other side. But what is that first step? I'm asking the city council to please turn down the heat by tabling this resolution. The resolution, as it is written, is fatally flawed, biased, and ineffectual. We know that neither containment, nor terror, nor adequately strained military initiatives have worked. The city council should not be encouraging either side to double down on its failed tactics or to amp up the volume by echoing overly simplistic slogans. Don't trivialize this strategy by pulling your constituents, determine what percentage wants either side to win this horrific contest. Instead, show by example that you are on the side of humanity, the side of peace, compassion, and empathy by choosing to cut off the oxygen feeding the fires of outrage that are escalating this conflict. Thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Okay, council, the third and final speaker on speaking against item 11A is Judith Rosenberg. Ms. Rosenberg, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you will have up to five minutes to address council.
Thank you, Judith Rosenberg, 37917. I began my term as president of the Knoxville Jewish Alliance a few weeks ago, following the city council meeting on November 28th. After the divisive resolution that Councilmember Parker brought to that meeting, and after our community's publicly stated desire to engage in dialogue that might actually be productive, we hoped that we would not have to reengage with city council on difficult and painful issues prompted by a resolution that would clearly provoke conflict among Knoxville communities ever again. Now, we are presented with another resolution that does not offer anything substantive nor meaningful to our community. In fact, it is extremely hurtful yet again. The city of Knoxville does not have a foreign policy, nor a foreign policy expertise. Therefore, the Knoxville Jewish community has not and will not approach city council for any resolutions concerning the Hamas terror attack on Israel on October 7th, 2023, the well-documented and internationally acknowledged atrocities of that day: the capture of 247 hostages, 134 from six different countries who are still in captivity, including the bodies of at least 31, and the fact that the only group in this conflict with the stated goal of genocide is Hamas. This resolution will only continue to fuel hate speech and the anti-Israel, anti-Jewish...
Just pause the clock for a minute. Okay, it's quiet.
This resolution will only continue to fuel hate speech and the anti-Israel, anti-Jewish sentiment we experienced on and since November 28th. It is clear from public remarks, genocidal chants, and hurtful signs that there are people in our city who fundamentally do not believe in the state of Israel's right to exist and also wish death to Jews and to Israelis. Our community grapples with these facts every day and multitudes of others that only compound our anguish and our fear. Not only are we grieving the losses since October 7th, but many of us do not feel safe right now. A report released in February by the American Jewish Committee found that almost half, 46%, of Jewish respondents say they've changed their behavior due to fear, including not wearing or displaying things that identify them as Jewish or avoiding certain places and events out of safety concerns. Here in Knoxville, here in Knoxville, multiple people have expressed their concerns to me, not only about themselves, but personal incidents and stories that have impacted their lives and those of their families. And we have no intention of diminishing the real pain, suffering, loss of life, and current fear also experienced by the Knoxville Palestinian community. The war in Gaza must end, and diplomacy must start. Too many Palestinians and Israelis have perished, and too many Palestinians and Israelis have had their lives shattered and destroyed. This resolution is an unfortunate statement of Councilmember Parker's understanding of what an at-large council member needs to do when it comes to supporting the entirety of the Knoxville community. Since November 28th, over three months ago, the only outreach the Knoxville Jewish Alliance received from Ms. Parker was an email on March 7th to our program and administrative staff, not our leadership, informing them of this resolution she planned to bring forward this evening. This resolution will only continue to fuel hurt and division between two minority populations in our city while doing nothing to address the anti-Jewish sentiment, Islamophobia, and provide a space where open dialogue can happen and communities and commonalities can be shared. To paraphrase Rabbi Sharon Brous, "In the presence of immense suffering, agony, and grief, we are called to be human with one another, to see each other, to not turn away even in the worst and hardest moments." Thankfully, last week, Mayor Kinkanen brought representatives of our community together with the Muslim community of Knoxville. It was a pleasure for me to meet their leadership and to begin what I hope and pray is a continuing and thoughtful discussion about ways we can come together for collaboration and perhaps even healing moving forward. The Knoxville Jewish Alliance is ready and willing to work collectively on positive, productive solutions and a shared future for our communities. It is extremely unfortunate that our city council must spend its time in this manner. I thank you for your service to and support of our community.
Okay. Counsel, that concludes public speakers on item 11A. Ms. Parker, as the author of this item, did you want to speak? You have up to eight minutes.
Yes, please. Thank you, mayor. When I brought the resolution forward in November of 2023, the feedback that I received after introducing that resolution was that it went too far and that it was a missed opportunity. That's what I heard from those who attended and were able to speak with my colleagues about the resolution. And so, I committed to writing a resolution that was not, did not have language such as "we stand with Palestine." It does not have the word ceasefire in the resolution. This resolution is simply an acknowledgement of the provisional orders of the International Court of Justice and acknowledges the role that the U.S. plays, or the obligation of the U.S. in upholding that ruling. And we have heard from the speakers tonight and those who've heard it in the media, statements that have continually been made by elected leaders in this country that concern me, that to me rise to the level of inciting violence. Therefore, it is important when we have elected officials who are making such statements about the use of U.S. tax dollars, the use of U.S. weapons, it is important that we speak up. When I wrote the new resolution, I did want it to be inclusive, and that's why I reached out to the Knoxville Jewish Alliance. I did not have contact information for the leadership. I did look on the website, and I sent a message to those individuals who had contact information available. My email was not well-received, but I did follow up and asked if we could meet, if we could exchange phone numbers. I sent every phone number I have. I would have loved to have been invited to whatever the mayor had pulled together, and I'm sure there are other leaders from the Muslim community who would have loved to have been invited to that as well because I am open to the dialogue, and I know others are as well. The resolution before us tonight simply states that regardless of our backgrounds, regardless of our beliefs, we are united by a commitment to our justice system, to our constitution, which calls upon us to adhere to international law. So when our leaders in our area are calling for actions by our U.S. government and those here in the audience today to do nothing in this moment, to allow what is currently taking place to move forward regardless of the ruling of the International Court of Justice, to me, it's even more important in these moments to speak up. The resolution before us tonight is a short resolution, and it's to the point. I would hope that we, as a city, can recognize our obligations, can recognize what is meant by the oath of office that we took. Because honestly, what I'm hearing as reasons for why we should not pass this are arguments that make me even more committed to passing a resolution like this. It really does, because the arguments have no foundation within our legal system. None. None. We have a legal system for a reason, and we have to be those brave, courageous people who are willing to stand up and enforce the laws that we have on the books.
Please, no talking from the crowd. Councilmember Parker has the floor.
We cannot be swayed by each individual's own personal beliefs. We must look at what our obligations are as a city, as a state, as a country, and adhere to that. I truly believe that there is power in these resolutions being passed by city councils around the country. I truly believe that it is actions like these that have taken place on other issues, other international issues as well, that do move our federal leaders to take different actions. And so while we do not have the ultimate power to stop what is happening... And so while we do not have the ultimate power to stop what is happening, we do have power in the seats that we hold, and we do have the ability to influence those around us who do have the power to take action. And so that's why I brought this resolution forward today. It is not the same resolution that came before us in November. It is calling upon us to acknowledge that the International Court of Justice is currently investigating whether a genocide is taking place, and while that is occurring, the U.S. should not be sending weapons to a country that has been accused of committing acts It's a very simple resolution. The resolution, in my opinion...
Members of the audience, if you're not quiet, you'll be asked to leave. Ms. Parker, go ahead.
The resolution doesn't call upon us to even understand the definition of genocide, quite honestly. What it calls upon us to do is to uplift our systems of justice. And as an elected official, especially when there's a questioning of our systems of justice, that is when I feel that we absolutely must have these conversations and we absolutely must act. Because upholding the rule of law, which requires our own government to follow international law, is...
Please be quiet. Ms. Parker, please go ahead.
Is important to our own democracy. And before I run out of time, I just want to say, Mayor Kinkanen, I am outraged that you have locked people out of this building. I cannot believe it.
Vice Mayor Smith, and then Councilmember Singh. Please be quiet. Be quiet, or you'll be asked to leave. Be quiet. So, members of the audience, be quiet. Woman in the hat, be quiet. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm a low talker, so y'all are going to have to tone it down just for a minute. I appreciate everybody that's reached out to me, everybody that's here tonight. I met with a number of people who care deeply about this, and I shared my perspective on it, and I was encouraged to share it here, and that's what I'm going to do. A lot of times when you sit here, there are a lot of assumptions about what's going on in our brains, and I think that's a human problem, where we assume what's going on in each other's brains. Knoxville residents with family members in Israel and Gaza who have been harmed are suffering genuine pain. You are right to be mortified by what you see for the past few months. We care. I can tell you that I am prayerful, and I've taken my own action personally, as we all do, to stand up for what we see that is awful. I too lift up the desire for peacemakers to win, for local leaders on the ground have not done well either to prevent or to resolve this war. I agree for the need for unrestricted humanitarian aid and for the U.S. government to use all means possible to stop the death of another single human life. There is unity in this room on human dignity, and I can promise you, if you listen carefully to some of the speakers, you can find the thread that is shared by both. However, we're responsible for what happens here on the grounds in Knoxville. And for Councilwoman Parker, I agree with many of your sentiments and some of which I do not. There is no limit to the number of injustices that this body or you see across the world or that the ICJ weighs in on, whether it be Gaza, Ukraine, or Myanmar. Knoxville is responsible for legislation and oversight of Knoxville. The scale of human suffering in this awful war is hard to fathom, but it's not our responsibility to place our judgment on foreign wars or injustices. Our moral compass is not supreme. Furthermore, this resolution makes no attempt to listen to the complexities for everyone involved in this room. And again, if you listen carefully, you can hear leaders in this community, in this room, who share leadership positions, who are willing to show real leadership as it relates to Knoxville discrimination, hate speech, and vulnerability, and the feeling of living here and feeling discriminated against is unacceptable for anyone. For those that support this resolution, I have earnestly heard your perspective. For those I have met with, you have asked me to affirm your suffering, offer a balance to leaders who are elected not up here but who say awful things, and to agree to a desire for the halt of innocent life. I agree. I hope you heard me, and I hope you hear me now. There is real work to be done here in Knoxville. As we've heard from many people in this room, you have experienced discrimination, something hateful said to you that personally I haven't heard. And we should put every bit of energy in this room into stamping that out here so there's not war here. I encourage those in this room, I encourage those in this room who are leaders, who have voiced their opinion both today and in previous meetings, to meet and work on Knoxville. You have an opportunity to lead well, not just for short-term acknowledgement with resolutions that clearly don't bring unity. Real anti-discrimination, real community work is in front of you. If you don't have each other's phone numbers, I got them, I'll give them to you, and I'll show up whenever you want to have that conversation. So there is real suffering in this room. There is real suffering. People in this room have family members who have been kidnapped, murdered, starved. That is real, and I can speak a little bit for all of my colleagues that we all hear that. I know the hearts of all of these council members, and that's not lost on any of us. I, along with a lot of these other council members, will join you, but a resolution does not make a positive march towards a better Knoxville. It does not impact what's going on in Gaza and Israel, and we are left with power to control what happens here. What actually harms people here is what we should put every energy into so that the relatives abroad can see what real unity and hard work at war prevention and war resolution looks like. I won't be supporting this resolution, and I'm out of time, but I do want you to hear that your pain is felt, and I will take this lightly.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Singh. Councilmember Singh, you have the floor.
Thank you, Mayor. So much of what I was going to say is the same as you were saying, Vice Mayor. I feel the pain in this room. I also have many, many opinions about all kinds of things. I have opinions about the 40 million women missing in India, the genital mutilation going on in Ghana, about what's happening in Gaza, but all of these things can't come in front of us. If we pass this resolution, I don't, we're going to see people, people will be feeling like winners and losers, and we're not that. We're all losers while this is going on. Thank you.
Is there a motion on the floor? I don't see any lights on.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay. Councilmember Parker makes a motion to approve. Is there a second? Seeing none, this motion fails for lack of a second. Move on.
This is who won tonight. This is who won tonight. The fascist, the Zionist.
We're going to move on with our agenda. Go ahead and read. Or we are moving on with our agenda, conducting the business of the city.
Over 100...
You may not, please leave. You're not allowed to be at the podium. I'm going to ask you to leave. Please, we're going to conduct our business. Go ahead and try it. Let's try it.
You started this, idiot. We will never forget.
Counsel, let's take a five-minute recess.
We hold you accountable.
Information, if anyone is here to speak or, you know, hear counsel's discussion on items on second reading, those were all already passed on consent. So if you have an item that begins with number nine, it's already been passed, and you're free to say if you want, but your item's over. Okay. Let's see, I think we're on item 11B.
11B is a resolution authorizing the Industrial Development Board of the City of Knoxville to negotiate and accept from Knox Encore LLC or an affiliate thereof payments in lieu of ad valorem taxes with respect to real property located at the following locations: 0 Clark Street, 0 May Avenue, 0 Richard Street, 0 West Fifth Avenue, 0 West Fourth Avenue, and 1000 May Avenue, and finding that such payments are deemed to be in the furtherance of the public purposes of the board as defined in Tennessee Code Annotated Section 7-53-305.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion made to approve. Any questions or discussion? Anybody signed up to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Two people have signed up to speak in opposition to item 11B. Ms. Sparks and then Mr. Roach. Tina Sparks, you have up to five minutes to address counsel. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record. And remember to press the little button on the microphone thing to turn it on. It's just right there on the base of it? Yeah. You got it.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, ma'am.
Tina Sparks, 2310 Cecil, 37917, 37917, 37917. Tommy Smith, I had a lot to say tonight. All of that has gone out of my brain. You guys know me. I never write anything down. I never know what I'm going to say until I get here. I thought I did until I stood out there with all these empty seats. Resolution B, building a Tennessee-themed sports bar, a golf course range, putting range, an arcade, all the things in Councilwoman McKenzie's district and Councilwoman Ryder's district. I went over there. I took, I've taken pictures from there. I listened to a news cast from Buffalo, New York. Guess what? Ours is being built, supposedly is going to be built, on top of a recycling, God knows who, what is in the soil, because I can't find where you all have done EPA, has done anything on this property. I did see where there are still people living in some of those houses, Clark Street, May Fourth, Fifth, in Buffalo, you know, where they built theirs, the New York equivalency of ours, on top of a recycling, an old recycling center. Something is wrong here. That, of course, we don't know what all you've been doing. Maybe you all haven't had yet, got all the EPA you need, safe, our kids can go over there. Second Creek is over there. Second Creek is over there. I have pretty much lost all faith in you all tonight, what little I had left. Gwen McKenzie, Lauren Ryder, I know you said that you wanted, let me have it, that something in this, you were glad to see that it was a nonprofit organization helping the boys and girls learn how to play golf and how to have manners. The boys and girls in East Knoxville have manners. The boys and girls in North Knoxville have manners. They don't have to play golf on a contaminated golf range to show their manners. And if you had all this time, if this has been in the... Guys, this is not just yesterday. This is not last week. This is not August of last year, August of last year. This has been going on for years and years. You guys had time. You had time to find an empty place if you really and truly wanted to serve the boys and girls who are disadvantaged. What about East Knoxville? What about the East Side? There are so many places on the East Side. This is just another example of you saying one thing, it sounds good, we think you're all doing such a good job, but when you, remember my, what's the word? My onion analogy, every time I pull a piece of you guys back, I just keep getting more and more onion, more and more onion. When are you going to stop? All you got to do is do the right thing. Tommy Smith, you got to do the right thing. Gwen McKenzie, Seema, I have no words for you after tonight, none. Debbie Helsley, I don't know you. I think you are a decent person. Lynn Fugate, I don't know you. I think you are a decent person. I think all of you are decent people. Show it. Show your decency. Show your decency for this community. I yield my time in Constance Avery's words. I yield my time.
Next person signed up to speak on this item in opposition is Rick Roach. Mr. Roach, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes.
Rick Roach, Knoxville. It's heck when you come in to a government meeting, a local government meeting, and basically you encounter a cluster club. And I'm going to address, let me address the issue first. Let me address the issue first. There's not enough environmental testing that you can do to take, to make that site where people gather on a consistent basis and entertain themselves, or they get entertained. There's not enough remediation that you can do on that site, okay? When I got involved with the Williams Creek watershed, okay, I had to kind of pick up And so in that process, I found out, especially in the lower-class income areas that were highly established because they were connected to industrial site areas, and in the predominantly black communities, Mechanicsville, Lonsdale, and more, ooh, how about that? And more importantly, East Knoxville, the pollution levels were off the charts, and we, I was making requests over and over again, just as I was learning the level of devastation. David Brace, you know what I'm talking about. Yup, okay? And nothing's been done with that property, this property concern, nothing, okay? So I don't care how much soil you scrape, how much road... how much road, you've already done the road. Okay? Okay, well, that means you wanna move ahead, move along, and that's fine. Okay? Gwen, you're right. This is not the, 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 the normal site for this type of project. It really isn't. Okay? It really isn't. Okay, all right. Lauren, happy hollers, happy holler, you know? You can't, you can't, you can't do this. Y'all get, y'all can't vote this in. Y'all can't okay this. Until you do an independent environmental study, bring in whoever you want, but they have no association with the company, with Encore, or with anybody else. Okay? No connection to UT. Bring them in and have them do an extensive environmental impact study and have them be approved by the EPA, not just TDEC. Okay? TDEC's just a, a, a mechanism for moving things along. And they're, they're, they're swamped anyway. They don't have enough people. Okay? So if it takes another six months just to get it done and then get the report done another six months, the evaluation? Do that. But you need to table this right now. Okay? If the owners of the property wanna go ahead and he's giving them a pilot? Good gaga-moga. Man, let them pay the cost. Seriously, pay the cost. Or make their deal with TDEC and get all the grant money they can get to do the testing or whatever. But let them do it, okay? Don't give them any assistance. I mean, every, I know y'all want development. I understand that part. But this ain't it. This is not it. And mayor, if you make another decision to shut off seating, available seating for a public meeting, you're gonna get the City of Knoxville sued. Makes no sense. It really does not make any sense. Have some strength about this, all of you.
Counsel, that concludes the people who signed up to speak on this agenda item. Vice Mayor Smith?
Thank you, mayor. Um, I don't know if it's the developer or RJ or someone from KCDC that wants to address this, uh, the environmental concerns associated with this property.
Ms. Justice.
What are the regulations? What are required? What has this developer already done? What do they have to do?
Yes, um, this site is in the I-275 redevelopment area and part of the due diligence. Um, for moving forward, we'll be doing all the appropriate and further environmental study and remediation for the site according to EPA's guidelines.
What are some of those? Do you know?
Uh, it's soil remediation. Um, there, in the past, there have been some evaluations and discussions with TDEC and EPA on what suitable developments would be appropriate here. And it has, um, it, there, housing would not be allowed here, for example, so it would need to be a commercial use. And we could talk all day about why that is, but there are certain and appropriate uses for sites that have different levels of contamination.
And on the, uh, the end of whatever remediation that has to happen, will TDEC and the EPA have to approve that work?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those, oh, I'm sorry. Uh, Councilmember Thomas.
Yeah, just to comment, this site here, uh, even though it's not in East Knoxville, it's close to Lonsdale. And months ago, I walked that property with a member of the Lonsdale community who was somewhat excited about the possibilities of having youth in Lonsdale to be able to use that site. And, uh, I've talked with the, Mr. McCamey, who's the developer, and we've already engaged in conversation about how to engage, uh, youth in the area on that site. So, uh, just to comment, that's, those discussions are in the works, so we're not oblivious to, uh, engaging with people in those communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Singh?
Thank you, mayor. I'm gonna be voting against this item on the principle that we wouldn't do this for a private citizen. And I've gotten weary of, this is supposed to be free market. Figure it out. Don't mean that to be harsh, but, um, we don't do this for private citizens when they're trying to do something that they're not gonna be able to afford. So I don't see why we should do this.
Ms. Justice, could you just sort of explain a little bit about our tax incentive?
Yes, our, our tax-
Public-private partnership type thing?
Yes, the public-private partnerships um, are certainly catered towards any developer that meets the criteria of needing to fulfill a gap in their financing in order to make a project viable. It is certainly, um, these programs that are larger incentives are focused on commercial developments and larger developments. Um, and they are, uh, they, we, we do conduct a Munichap report with a third-party financial analysis. So it is pretty rigorous. Um, and, and the analysis of the financials and the equity and the capital that they're bringing to the table is very much evaluated, and we determine an appropriate incentive.
Thank you for explaining that to me, but I already knew that. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Ryder, your microphone light is on?
Apparently, that's how we're supposed to let you-
Yes, yes, that's what I'm calling in.
That's the only light we have? Okay. So, um, I just wanted, for the record, clarify that this is solidly and all within the fourth, the sixth district. Congratulations, Councilwoman McKenzie. Um, this is a, looks like a, what I believe to be a good project to clean up a blighted, unused parcel, some of which, Mr. Cohen, I believe you might verify, some of which is in the right-of-way and is non-taxpaying parcels at the moment, but will become taxpaying parcels. Is that correct? Right, so we're gonna move property that was not ever taxpaying from right-of-way to taxpaying parcels to increase the amount of taxpaying parcels. And as Ms. Justice said, property that would not be suitable for housing, so we couldn't make more housing there. Um, and I also want to, for the record, because I've just read, the only media I spoke to about this project, um, unless I mistyped something on Facebook answering a constituent question, I believe I spoke to Compass and I've looked at their article. For the record, I didn't say anything about manners. I said stuff about, um, uh, youth being able to play this activity and do this sport. Uh, First Tee is an organization, not Boys and Girls Club. First Tee is an organization that has long been in the City of Knoxville, and I believe is a national organization that helps youth get into golf, which is not a sport that I'm into, though I am from Augusta, Georgia, was not raised, is a pro-golf person, um, but great for others. And by the way, as my understanding, young girls who get introduced to golf, if they're even moderately mediocre, they can get a free ride to college because there are very few women playing golf. So on that note, I wish somebody had introduced me to golf and my dad hadn't have been anti-golf. So, um, I know, um, Mr. McCamey, I spoke to him years ago about this project. Um, anyway, I just wanted to comment, since it was stated that I said something that I didn't say, and I wanted to correct the record. Um, I see Ms. Sparks was not feeling well and has left, so I'm sorry that she's not here to see that, to hear that. But I do appreciate, as my children's kindergarten teacher, that she did work with my children on manners because they always need work on that. Um, and I appreciate her efforts in that category. So, uh, we'll let her know that next time she is able to join us. Thank you.
Councilmember Thomas?
Yes, um, Ms. Justice, the, uh, proposed pilot, I believe that's nine years. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that's relatively a shorter term than a lot of pilots that-
It is a shorter term. We've been focusing all of our incentives under 10 years.
Right. And, um, you may not have these numbers in front of you. I forgive you, and you can get them to me later. Any estimate of how many, how much tax revenue that's bringing, bringing in now and how much we estimate it will eventually bring in?
I do have that somewhere on my computer, and I'm happy to send that back. It's in the AIS. Um, do you have that voice in front of you?
I do have it. Sir, it's, uh, right now, I think we just get $4,423 a year. Once this is complete construction and the pilot rolls off, we'll get $185,705, which means the simple payback on the pilot is only eight years and eight months, and we'll be making $185,705 more per year in property taxes.
Okay, yeah. And just a, a general comment, I'm pretty familiar with that property. We all know what its past has been, and I've walked it several times to try to figure out some kind of, uh, possibilities for it. And I can't imagine, um, anything else that is gonna work there. At least, there may be other things that will work there, but nothing has been forthcoming for, for quite a while. So this looks like the best opportunity we have to reclaim blighted property and then get it back on the tax rolls, and also to use it to engage the community. And for the record, I'm not a golfer either. I haven't had a golf club in my hands since I was in college, and I think that was only once. But, um, anyway, uh, there's a lot of interest to bring in youth, uh, to this sport, and, you know, I, I can encourage that. So, uh, I just don't think that we, a better use of this property is not on the horizon. Let me put it that way.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember McKenzie?
Thank you, mayor. And so I also want to interject that it, it, it's not like this is prime property that a lot of people are beating the doors down to wanna have an opportunity to do something with because those options are limited. This will be a $30 million investment in that property. Uh, it's also, and I don't think that any of us mentioned, that it's gonna bring jobs there as well because it will, uh, hopefully be able to employ uh, young people and adults from the East Knoxville community. I think the, um, the mistake was said that this was part of Lawrence District because just a matter of fact is that the sixth district is the only district in the city that touches every other district in the city. And so I think that's why that, that mistake was made. But, uh, again, I'm excited that someone has shown the interest, that has done the work to see how they could make something positive work in this, in this area and on that site. Uh, if anyone does not, is not familiar with where it is, the blight, the things that were going on, uh, there previously, um, I've been down there a couple of times. Every time I go and they've cleaned it up, you come back a, a week or two later, it looks like a, a trash dump again. And so, uh, not the safest area, so I am glad to see something positive that will, um, be able to give back and contribute to the city on the tax rolls and into the community as it relates to jobs. And so, uh, because of that and a few other things, I am definitely in favor, uh, and encourage folks that, that are wanting to invest in our city and in our communities. If we have incentives that can help that become a possibility to go through the process and see if they can make the cut before it comes to, uh, city council. So, um, that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions or discussion, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, seven, one.
11C is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents to award a total amount not to exceed $220,200 in opportunity youth program grants to support and programming for youth and young adults to 10 community-based organizations in the city.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Uh, Councilmember McKenzie?
Uh, my apologies, mayor. I didn't mean to keep my light on.
Oh, okay. Uh, any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11D is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents to award a total amount not to exceed $27,742 in youth violence prevention week grants to provide support and programming to nine community-based organizations in the city.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember McKenzie?
Uh, yes, mayor. I would like to make a correction, uh, in this resolution that the nine be changed to 10 community organizations.
Motion made to amend it to, from nine to 10. Community has been made and seconded. Everyone, this is an amendment. Does everyone understand the amendment on the floor? Uh, seeing no questions, all those in favor of this amendment, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Amendment carries, back to the original motion as amended. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11E is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Sage View Advisory Group LLC to provide consultative services for the city's deferred compensation plan in an amount not to exceed-
Please stop talking. You're disrupting the meeting of the city council. If you cannot be quiet, you'll be asked to leave. Thank you.
In an amount, we're on 11E. In an amount not to exceed $37,500 per year for the first three years with a 4% increase for each subsequent year, and to provide a personal financial wellness program for the city's employees for an additional and separate fee of $5,000 per year.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11F is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute any and all documents necessary to accept proposals to provide excess liability insurance coverage, vehicle and equipment damage insurance coverage, and inland marine insurance coverage for mobile equipment, all as part of the city's and K-Trans Management Incorporated's self-insured liability program for an estimated annual premium of $898,997.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11G is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an, an agreement with Kimbley Horn and Associates Incorporated to provide grant writing services for the Safe Streets and Roads for All Grant Program for an amount not to exceed $35,679.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11H is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Foundation Systems Engineering PC to provide asphalt testing and inspection services for the city's 2024 resurfacing program for an amount not to exceed $27,400.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11I is a resolution authorizing the mayor to amend an agreement, uh, rather, the agreement with Edison Electric LLC for the, the as-needed maintenance and repair of the city's streetlights and high masts, increasing the annual amount by $270,000 for a new total amount, annual amount amount of $1,550,000.
Second. Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I just wanted to ask Mr. Claybo a question. I know back when Mr. Cannon was in charge of engineering, there were some discussions about some repairs. Some of the lights are out around 640 and I-40. Is this contract to cover just regular maintenance? What is the progress on some of the problems that were found with the interstate lights that needed to be repaired?
Yes, this contract does cover regular maintenance, which would include those lights around 640. We've looked at some of those, but we're also working in conjunction with TDOT and the existing contract going on over there. So I'm not sure. I think we've repaired some of those. I'm not sure we've repaired all of them yet.
Okay. But so does some of them fall under TDOT's umbrella? Or it's a mixed bag?
With that particular project, there could be some that is included in our project, but the maintenance, the overall maintenance of those, once TDOT is finished with the project, would be the city's.
Okay. All right. Thanks.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11J is a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an agreement with Knoxville's Community Development Corporation for infrastructure improvements at Austin Homes along Summit Hill Drive, Harriet Tubman Street, and Bell Street as part of the Austin Homes Master Plan Phase Four in an amount not to exceed $1,600,000.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Councilmembers, as you know, this is a project that the city has been working with KCDC. This infrastructure work will help transform the First Creek at Austin campus and community. Used to serve and house a couple dozen people, and once it's done, it'll be modernized and house hundreds of people. And First Creek at Austin will have more than 430 units in a location that now is at the center of our biggest redevelopment efforts. So thank you for all your support of these endeavors and improvements. Any questions or discussion? Oh, there's someone signed up to speak in favor of this, Mr. Roach. Okay. Nobody else has signed up to speak on this item. Any further questions or discussion? Councilmember Thomas?
I just want to say I like the infrastructure along with the housing and put in at the same time, and boy, they complement each other. So good going.
Yep, I agree. Okay. Seeing no further questions or comments, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
11K is a resolution authorizing the mayor to provide funding in an amount not to exceed $400,000 to Knoxville Knox County Planning to create a transit-based opportunities map identifying locations for development along transit corridors in order to increase transit usage and reduce emissions.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Vice Mayor Smith and then Councilmember Helsley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. This is a grant just for the public that is at the intersection of more transit and more housing, but I mostly wanted to highlight that it was one of council's priorities that we established about a month ago to study development along corridors, and it was one of the priorities we gave to planning as well. So thank you, Director Brooks and Mayor Kinkanen and staff for hearing that request and acting on it so quickly. More housing and more transit in areas of poverty is a top priority. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12A is an ordinance to amend the Knoxville City Code, Chapter Two, Article One, Section Two dash four, relative to the oath of office taken by police officers and firefighters.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12B is an ordinance amending Chapter Two, Article Seven, Division Four, Section Two dash seven seven one of the Knoxville City Code to update the Knoxville Fire Department's record retention schedule.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Oh, wait, I'm sorry. There's someone who's signed up to speak.
It is Mr. Roach.
Oh, Mr. Roach. Is Mr. Roach present? Nope, still not here. Okay. No one else has signed up to speak on that item? I'm sorry, so all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12C is an ordinance to close an unnamed alley from Morgan Street to its southern terminus as it runs within City Block 07022 and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners, best Connolly applicant, 4th District.
Move to approve.
Motion made to approve. Councilmember Ryder?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a motion to pass this on emergency, and so, motion to pass on emergency.
Okay. The amendment's been offered to read this on an emergency basis, has been made and seconded. Any questions on the amendment? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion, the motion to amend passes, so now we're reading it on emergency, which means it will be first and second reading, all wrapped into one, or only requires one reading. Any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
12D is an ordinance to close a portion of McElroy Avenue from its east side to Varner Street, from McElroy Avenue, from the McElroy Avenue intersection to approximately 200 feet east and authorizing the mayor to execute quitclaim deeds to the adjacent property owners, Urban Engineering applicant, 6th District.
Motion made to approve and seconded. Any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We have six people signed up to speak at public forum. The first one is Miriam Esther Wilhelm. Ms. Wilhelm, are you present? Okay, next person is Tom Ruggles. Mr. Ruggles, are you present? Okay, if you could come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Sorry, I wasn't scrolled, so I didn't know we were at this point in the evening. Tom Ruggles, Knoxville District Two. Yeah, really disgusted with this body's actions today. I don't really have any other words for y'all, quite frankly. We still got some of the people of Knoxville here today.
Excuse me, Mr. Ruggles. This is a public forum for you to address council. Mr. Ruggles, you're out of order. You're here, public forum is for you to address city council. Please face the council, or you'll be asked to leave. Mr. Ruggles, please face council.
The people of Knoxville do not stand with the state of Israel in the way that our elected officials do.
Mr. Ruggles, you're out of order. Please face council.
This points out what we have seen in our greater nation, where the president, the congressman, and everybody else is not stood up and listened to the will of the people despite millions of people being in the streets.
Okay, council, I'm going to ask him to leave. Please leave voluntarily, or you'll be escorted by the Knoxville Police Department. You decide, Mr. Ruggles.
How am I out of order? This is...
You're out of order. I'm asking you to leave. You leave voluntarily, or you leave by arrest. You're out of order. You can turn around and address council, or you can leave. Those are your choices. Okay. Next person, next person signed up to speak is Adronikus Thomas. Mr. Thomas, are you present? Adronikus Thomas. Please come up to the podium. Members of the audience, if you persist, you'll be asked to leave also. Mr. Thomas, please turn on your microphone, and you'll have, you'll have up to five minutes to address council. If you could start by stating your name and address for the record.
My name is Adronikus Thomas, 3236 Wilson Avenue, Knoxville, Tennessee, 37914. I'm here to speak about some injustice that I feel that is going on at Knoxville Community Development Corporation. I've been an employee of Knoxville Community Development Corporation for 31 years. I worked for 14, 15 years supposedly in the gun zone down in Austin Homes. During the pandemic, we had a lot of things going on in housing. We had upper management that instructed tenants to not to pay their rent so they could collect ERA money. When this program was ended, a lot of those tenants was left with $10,000, $5,000 in back rent with no way to pay their rent. Now we're at a point that we are evicting those tenants for doing what upper management at KCDC instructed them to do. And you say, why are you here? Why are you not at the board? Why are you didn't take this to the CEO? I did it all. I can show you emails after emails that I sent to the CEO, and he did not respond until the third one. And then he said this could be handled during appeal, during a grievance hearing. But this is a policy flaw. Now that we're facing eviction, they have instructed us to do promissory notes. Been a 31-year employee of KCDC, and I've never heard of a promissory note within HUD policies. We do have a repay agreement at HUD which states that we can only charge up to 40% of their income. That's 30% for rent and 10% for the repay agreement. We are charging people at least 200, 300% of their income. I have one lady that pays $250 a month for rent, and her repay agreement is over $800 because the only instruction we have from upper management is that they pay 20% of their balance and they have six months to pay off everything else. All of this has been brought to the attention of the people on the board as well as our CEO. There's a high rate of vacancies at KCDC. There's a high rate of turnover at KCDC. We have one property that has had seven managers within the last year due to lack of leadership, lack of training, and not listening to the concerns of the employees. I could have brought a lot of employees here like we brought to the board meeting, but for fear of retaliation, which happened after we went to the board, they are willing to speak to you all in confidence if you have any questions. I got 31 years in. My mama would roll over in her grave if she know if I was going to kick out a little old lady that's 80 years old that someone told her not to pay her rent, and now you are forcing me to kick her out. I have a lady who is a parent of three kids who had a mental breakdown just two weeks ago worrying about how she was going to pay this after KCDC told them not to pay their rent the ERA program was going to pay them. I got all these documents that I can provide for you. You have never seen me here. I'm a public service. I'm on the election commission. This is an injustice. I'm just asking for some help. I asked for a meeting with our CEO. He refused to meet with us. He pushed us off on a new hire, Sabrina Draplin, that was not familiar with everything that was going on in public housing. Just this day, at 2:30, I had a meeting with her. She told me that the promissory note was KCDC procedure, and I asked her, do KCDC procedure supersedes HUD procedure? She would not answer my question. She said the procedure do not have to go before the board. My time is running out, so if you would, please, please look into this. I've seen the police chief at my development more in the last year than I have my CEO.
Mr. Thomas, your time is up, but if you could, at the conclusion of the meeting, someone from my staff will get your contact information and follow up with you later.
Thank you, Mayor.
Next person signed up is Amanda Jacobson. Ms. Jacobson, are you present? Amanda Jacobson. Okay. Next person is Alexis Gibson. Ms. Gibson, if you could start by stating your name and address for the record, and you'll have up to five minutes to address council.
Before I start, who do I talk to about discrimination and being racially discriminated against? Because I've made several attempts. I've called several different congress members and senators. I believe I left a voicemail on Mr. Roberto's voicemail the other day because I couldn't figure out where my district was. So if someone could like help me with who I talk to about that, that'd be super nice. That was my one question about it, but could I actually have what I wanted to say? Because I'm at 428, and I'd really just wanted to know, like, is that an answer? Like, can I ask somebody for help or appear or...
At the end of the meeting, someone can try to find out what you're asking exactly, but...
Okay, cool. Thank you. All right, so could I have my time back a little bit, please?
No.
Okay. A few sessions, my name's Alexis. I'm at 37909. I grew up here in Knoxville, and I will be the first one to tell you that Knoxville is one of the most racist cities I've ever been a part of. And you know how? Because I'm mixed. My dad was adopted. I have the documentation where he had to sign an affidavit that his mom was, or like his mom had to sign this affidavit that his dad was black. You know, you had to do that in the South. I remember in 2013 in May, when Gibbs High School hung up all of the raccoons and the possums, and they chopped up the turtle and they put it in the mailbox. And the principal said it was not race-related, but if anybody understands any black terminology, you know that there's a message in there. So starting off, a few sessions ago, I witnessed this council discuss current human resource standards in the city, and a gentle lady who is the head of HR stated that she was adequately equipped to handle the task. Yet at no point since she has taken office have I seen anything regarding the attacks on DEI. Diversity, equity, and inclusion are organizational frameworks which seek to promote the fair treatment and full participation of all people, particularly groups who have historically been underrepresented or subjected to discrimination on the basis of identity or disability. I am not Jewish. I am not Palestinian. I am not Israeli. I am American. I try to be a good Lutheran Christian. I live in Knoxville, and I grew up here. To say this conflict does not involve Knoxville is a lie and is a cowardly one at that. India Kinkanen pulled this city into this war before she stood in solidarity with Israel, but it was only after she made a bold political statement in the international community that she really nailed her coffin shut to me that she's just another racist woman masquerading as one of the good ones. You know how I know that? Because you signed up for Flock, and Flock Services is actually serviced under Amazon Web Services, which is also serviced for half of the United States after 2020 happened. We all uploaded our what? Our I9s, our social security numbers, all of those, like Employee Navigator, I'm sure ADP, all of those use web services. And you're either going to be using Google or Oracle or Amazon Web Services. Oracle is the service for the Department of Defense. It was part of Project Jedi, and there was this back and forth because Trump like discriminated against Amazon, and they had to redo it and ultimately went to Oracle. Well, under Project Nimbus, which if anybody doesn't know, the entire internet is under the ocean. It's not in the cloud. It's not on satellites. All of the internet connections run through to where? The Middle East. Israel is the number one cybersecurity giant in the world. It has got the most technology out of anybody. All right, that's fine. We don't want to talk about the Israeli-Palestinian conflict. What I want to talk about is domestic abuse survivors. You've got FLAC cameras at the end of every entrance and exit to this city, which sends AI-regulated data that's not monitored by a regular person, but it just tracks and records your information, and then it sends it and stores it on Amazon Web Services, right? Sounds great. Except on Project Nimbus, it's a four-part contract determined with Google and Amazon to send all of your data to Israel. So if it's secure, why aren't we keeping it here? Why are we sending it to the most contested conflict zones in the entire United States? I mean, like, in the entire world. The other thing about that is it's discriminatory because you have a large Palestinian population, you have a large Black and criminal population, because the South is poor. And Baslow's hierarchy of needs, yeah, you're going to have thieves. That's why it's like I stole a loaf of bread from Les Mis. Like, did anybody watch that? No. Sure, they didn't, because it doesn't seem like y'all like music here. But the issue is that you guys are hurting people beyond what you think you're right about, and you can laugh at me, you can smirk at me behind my back because you guys know about, you know, your parents on social media, but you can't tell if your kids are being trafficked. Tennessee's one of the worst ones for it because we have our two national highways and a regional airport, but the Flock cameras haven't caught any sex rings or any of the missing kids or that missing autistic kid.
Next speaker is, the next and final speaker is Lisa McCloyd. Lisa McCloyd, are you present? Just come to the podium, state your name and address, and you'll have up to five minutes.
My name is Lisa McLeod. I live in 37920. I would just like to share a few poems. The first one is by a Knoxville poet. Her name is Summer Awad. "When my father married my mother, it was 1986. She was 18. He told her her country is demented, that it doesn't have a soul. She didn't believe him. A Southern girl born of stars and bars, land of the free, but it gnawed at her this accusation as she rolled grape leaves with my father's mother, Al Jazeera a constant hum. It is 2024. I am 29. My mother says to me, I understand why you don't want to live in this farcive a country. Our country is demented. It doesn't have a soul." This second poem is by Alice Walker, "To Stand Beaming and Clapping." "To stand beaming and clapping for anyone who bombs water and denies children its purity to drink endangers you, made mostly of water as you are. See this before it is too late." And the final poem I'd like to share is called "The World We Want Is Us." "It moves my heart to see your awakened faces, the look of aha, shining finally in so many wide-open eyes. Yes, we are the 99%, all of us, refusing to forget each other, no matter in our hunger what crumbs are dropped by the 1%. The world we want is on the way, Aaron D." what crumbs are dropped by the 1%. The world we want is on the way, Arundhati, and now we are hearing her breathing. The world we want is us united, already moving into it.
Councilmembers, that concludes public forum, and without objection, this meeting is adjourned.